November 12th, 2024 to order. Roll call, please.
Zazada.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Smith. Perkins.
Here.
Al. Verbic. Walker.
Here.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Five present.
So, all three aldermen reached out to me well in advance and let me know that they wouldn't be able to be here, except Smith said he is really hoping he's going to be here, just a little bit late. So, they all gave advance notice. All right, with that pledge of allegiance, we are missing Mr. Shadow Gentry. So Deputy Chief, if you wouldn't mind leading us in the pledge of allegiance, that'd be fantastic.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, approval of the agenda. I would take a motion to approve the agenda as is.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Roll call, please.
Zazada.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Bye-bye.
Agenda has been approved. Moving to Agenda Item D, presentations. We have none. Agenda Item E, public participation, we have none. Appointments F, we have none. Then Agenda Item G, consent agenda. Number one, joint review board meeting minutes of July 26, 2024. Number two, special joint review board minutes of September 27, 2024. Number three, accounts payable and payroll through November 12, 2024, in the amount of $1,662,393.70. Number four, investment and bank balance summary through September 2024. Number five, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through September 2024. And number six, Crime Free Housing Bureau report, October 2024. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderwoman Zazada. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Zazada.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Bye-bye.
Excellent. Okay, we're moving on to Agenda Item H, public hearings. I'm going to go and call this public hearing to order at 6:03, and it is regarding truth and taxation hearing regarding the 2024 property tax levy. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment during this public hearing? Okay, Mr. Charwood.
For those of you who attended the Finance Advisory Committee hearing, meeting a few weeks ago back, which was just the Finance Advisory Committee along with Alderman Perkins and the city manager, I did something very rare at this podium. I complimented the commission and the city for what they were going to do as far as the City of DeKalb property tax levy. I am fully on board with what the city is attempting to do, and they're doing it in great strides this year with the $104 savings to the average homeowner. I'm finally glad to see some movement on that. I even went so far as to congratulate our city manager for a job well done on that portion of it.
I think your microphone messed up. Can you repeat that?
No, I was strict, very happy. However, I was rather, I know there's a however here, but I was rather disheartened when I saw that we're going to be kicked in the butt by the library. Now, this comes as a shocker that the library, according to the back material for tonight's meeting, and I did the math here, plans to seek a 34 percent. I didn't say 3.4 percent. I didn't say .34 percent, but 34 percent property tax levy increase from last year to this year. Documents show that the library is asking for a levy increase from $3.38 million in 2023 to $4.57 million in 2024. That's 1.18 million more than 2023, which means the average homeowner, based on calculations that the city provided, will pay about $50 more for the library line item on their taxes next spring. This will result in approximate 12 percent property tax increase dollars paid, not rates, we look at dollars paid, for every residential property and business-owned property. This, of course, is what caused PTEL to be triggered by the city, meaning the truth and taxation notice, the black box notice, has to be posted. Now, for those of you who follow inflation estimates, I believe 3.1 percent is the estimated inflation rate for this year that the U.S. government has posted, and I believe next year they estimate the rate to be about 1.8 percent. This library figure comes as a mega, mega shocker and massively exceeds the cost of inflation. Three point, let's see, three point, yeah, 3.1 percent? 34 percent? 10 times the cost of inflation. Now, don't get me wrong, I know the library provides services to the city, though some have argued that the library is becoming more of an entertainment center than a library. We need to keep it to a library. The library board needs to explain the rationale for this record-setting levy increase. I've watched these throughout the years. I have never, never seen an increase this large. This is the largest additional collection that the library has ever seen. It exceeds what the city is asking for, and the city provides police services, fire services, street services. The library is just what's in this building. Don't get me wrong, it provides valuable services, but not to the extent of the city. A $1.18 million increase is absolutely uncalled for. By comparison, the city is asking for a $618,000 increase in property taxes. I don't know if library officials are even aware that Meta is only going to be taxed at its full dollars for this year, then fall back to the 45 percent EAV next year going forward. Are they expecting the citywide EAV to remain at this year's level? They're going to start budgeting based on this figure going forward, and then next year will even be hit harder if they expect to get the same dollars. There is no reason that the library cannot keep taxpayers at a zero-dollar increase at a minimum, perhaps even bring it down like the city is doing. If they lower their rate enough to allow homeowners to see a zero-dollar increase, I believe the library would still see an additional $600 to $800,000 increase in revenue as a result of the properties at the south end of town. Now, what I recommend for the city to do is to request that the library board adjust the levy to what the library truly needs, not what it wants, what it truly needs, and hold the taxpayers harmless at a minimum. Now, I don't know, some of you may recall, I believe Alderman Verbic was here, but he's not here to hear my comments tonight, but a few years ago, when the library tax levy was unusually high, the city requested that the library come back to the city council and lower its levy amount. The library did, albeit with a very small amount, but still they came back with a lower, lower rate and lower dollars collected. The library board needs to do that again at a minimum with the insistence of this council. Now, it's my understanding that Ms. Faulkner has been part of the discussions with city leaders at recent tax summits to get on board with lowering tax rates and the amount of dollars collected. I don't know if she has wax in her ears or what, but apparently she's not getting the message, and neither is the library board. Now, I do remind you, this council, that you are the ones that appoint the library board. Every year, even Mr. Perkins said a few years ago, we have to get some board members on board at the library that are fiscally responsible, that understand finances. It seems that this year, we are going in the exact opposite direction. They are asking for more and more and more. You guys are partially responsible because the board members you appoint are the ones that are responsible for this figure. I know you often get your recommendations from the library director. I think going forward, you need to seek your own people for the library board, not go with what is recommended by Ms. Faulkner. Now, something very important I want to point out to you, and when you do check your emails later, I email each council member this along with the city manager, it has been inaccurately stated over and over that the city cannot change the property tax levy of the library. We've heard that over and over. Is this true or false? It is false. I sent to each of you an agenda, meeting minutes from 2008, from November 24th, where the city did change the property tax levy amount. They lowered the rate that the library was asking for. Do your research. We've heard this over and over and over again. Now, what it says, and I can read to you from the meeting minutes of November 24th, it said Alderman Naylor asked what obligation the council has relative to the rate being proposed from 24 cents up to 27 cents. They used to be 24 cents back then, they wanted to raise it to 27 cents. Attorney Guess, who was the attorney for the council, replied that receipts are only through the levy imposed by the city, and it's up to the council what amount should be levied for the library. That is the word we got from legal back then. An amended motion was made by Mr. Naylor to amend ordinance 0887 and maintain the tax levy at the library for 24 cents. It was seconded by Alderman Keller. The amended motion, Alderman Naylor then amended his motion to change the levy to 25 cents. The library wanted 27 cents. The amended motion to increase the tax levy for the library from 24 to 25 cents, not 27 cents, which is what they were asking for, was approved by this council. It can be done. So if I hear that argument again, that says that the library cannot change, that this council cannot change the library levy, that is absolutely false. Go back and look at your own approved meeting minutes, and again, the meeting minute date is November 24th of 2008. Now, I kind of wish this council would get vocal about this and ask the library to either justify this huge increase, have the library director come here and explain why she needs this huge revenue increase. You need to be vocal about this. Every year, we talk about kicking the can down the road, that next year we'll take care of this, next year we'll take care of this. Well, next year is here. We need to get the library on board with the city's goal to keep taxes lower. You guys have control over that. Couple of other things. Tonight, the school board is meeting. Unfortunately, it's meeting at the exact same time of this meeting. They are talking about increasing the dollars paid by City of DeKalb residents for everybody in DeKalb Township.
Mr. Charwood, we do have to keep it to the topic of the public hearing.
Right. What I'm pointing out is that you've had tax summits with all organizations, okay, including, including the school district. They're not getting on board here. I hope they change it, but right now, they're proposing an upward increase of $50, probably about $60 if you live in DeKalb Township.
I think we both would agree, I don't have any control, and we don't have any control over them.
That I know, I know. But I know we've had these meetings. I don't know if they're not listening, but I do want to remind you, and I stress this enough, the one organization you do have control over and passing is the library. Citizens do not have the ability to participate in a public hearing before the library, so keep that in mind. The only public hearing on the tax levy for the library is at this council. So that's why our pleas are made to the council to adjust that. One other quick thing, and I'll wrap up my comments here. I'm a little concerned about Kraft Heinz, because I know they were an important component of our tax base, and there was an article published in the Northern Star regarding Kraft Heinz being delayed by two years. This runs contrary to the information we've received before at this council. In fact, Tracy Smith said his wife saw helicopters moving stuff in, and the mayor, you agreed, said, "Good call. It's not happening for another two years." So we're going to be missing that revenue as well. So please keep that in mind when you're looking at budget discussions. But again, I ask you compliments on what the city is doing. I'm very concerned about what the library is doing. We need to hold the library accountable and bring them in here and force them. If they're not willing to do it, it'd be great if the library board did it, that would be the way to go. Send them back to the drawing board, have them come back with a new number. If they don't, this council needs to take appropriate action and lower the rate so we can continue to make our community more attractive to new homeowners. Thank you.
City, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? City manager?
Usually don't speak to the public hearing, but later on in this agenda, we have an ordinance, and I'll be speaking to this at that point.
Counsel, we can also just talk then as well. All right, hearing no other comments or questions. I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing at 6:15. All right, moving on to number two, we have a public, oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to go ahead and open our second public hearing at 6:15 PM regarding, a public hearing regarding a proposed annexation and development agreement for the approximately 42 acres of property located at the southwest corner of Illinois Route 38 and John Huber Parkway, PSE Huber IL Solar LLC. Is there anyone here that wants to speak on this particular item? Hearing none. City manager?
Yes, sir.
Wait till later, okay. Counsel? All right, hearing none. I'll go ahead and close this public hearing at 6:16. That was loud. All right, moving on to Agenda Item I, considerations. Number one, consideration of an intergovernmental agreement relating to the proposed South Forest Street Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Plan and Project. Can I have a motion to bring that to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of background for you tonight, and there's more that could have been written. I would summarize it in this way, that the JRB, the TIF GRB, which has been meeting to discuss the proposed South Forest Street TIF, loosely now known as TIF 4, has on two different occasions, and as recently as October 25th, discussed the possibility of an intergovernmental agreement. And you may ask, and people in the audience or listening in tonight might say, "Well, what do you need an intergovernmental agreement for?" And it has a lot to do with expectations that have been established by our previous TIF processes, the creation of new TIFs, and also by the fact that we have in our current, our current TIF 3, an intergovernmental agreement that establishes revenue sharing, among other things. So all this, the revenue sharing idea and the idea of surplusing some portion of the amount that would otherwise come into the TIF fund on an annual basis, proportionate to the way that each taxing body takes, basically, whether it's 60 percent, 10 percent, 5 percent, whatever. That began in conversation with the DeKalb City Council back in 2007, when there was about two years left of the original TIF 1, which had been created in 1986. And other taxing bodies, remember the context here, times are getting a little tough. It was just before the crash, basically, but the economy was slowing. And so the other taxing bodies said, "Well, we're willing to come to some agreement about the extension of TIF 1 until about 2022." But the trade-off here, the quid pro quo, is that we would like to enjoy some of that money that heretofore we've been contributing to your fund in good faith, that you would do projects. And there was a lot of discussion about that, but before the deadline of 2009, the council approved an intergovernmental agreement, which allowed for a 50-50, from the beginning, a 50-50 cost, or revenue sharing, having to do with the TIF increment. And then we know something about the history of TIF 3. TIF 3 was moving along as a consideration in 2018, and then in the fall of 2018, it was discovered, partly through the research of an attorney working in behalf of the school district, that almost 8 million, well, at that point, it wasn't known for sure what it was, but a year and a half later, we found after a forensic audit, that about $8 million had been used by city councils, city administrations over 10 years to take from the TIF incremental income, TIF fund, and put that into operations to allow the general fund. The next intergovernmental agreement was created in 2019 as a way of sort of evening the playing field. The city didn't have $8 million to put on the table and say, "Here, take your share," and so forth. But by closing the TIF one year early, and that increment at the time was about, it was over $7 million, that went a long way toward evening or reimbursing the other taxing bodies for what they had lost, and it was distributed proportionally. And then there was another piece, but I'm going to bore us with this now, but there also had been a surplus, it was to be a surplusing of sales tax, because originally, the TIF 1 was both a property tax and a sales tax TIF. And the sales tax TIF had gone away by state statute, but the city was still accruing, and for whatever reason, the Department of Revenue was stopping, not stopping them from accruing. And so there's another bit of money that then basically closed the books on the 8 million shortfall. Okay. So that led to a new arrangement. TIF 3 was to have a surplus agreement in it involving all the taxing bodies. For the first couple of years, well, first five years, it would be 30 percent, and then after 2026, so we're just a year short of the mark here, and for the balance until 2043, I believe, the city would then surplus 50 percent. So that's a framework in which our only TIF, existing TIF now is running its way. TIF 1 was. And so there is an expectation on the part of the other taxing bodies that some similar thing will happen. That prompted the discussions that I started out saying have occurred over a couple of meetings. There is a draft in front of you tonight. Other taxing bodies are taking that draft to their respective boards this month. And I believe tonight is the first one that would be, might be voted on, that would be at Kishawaki College. And from there, we'll see others. And it's not up for a vote tonight, but I wanted you to have a chance to look at the framework for it. It will be coming back as an action item, subject to your, any amendments and so forth we have tonight at the next regular meeting on the 25th. There is also a spreadsheet that shows with a conservative guess at where we'll be after 23 years. Obviously, a lot of variables here, a lot of things that could happen. Conservative in the sense that we know in the first year, if, let's say, this TIF was created and begins in 2025, and in 2025, as TIF increment is accruing, there would be no revenue sharing there. We also know in 2025 that we have a 2024 multiplication factor of, or excuse me, equalization factor of 14.69 percent. And I don't know where it'll be next year, but I think this is very conservative, 2.6 percent, it might be 10 for all we know. But then for the rest of the, of the TIF, it's at that roughly 2.5 percent level. So I think that's going to change and go up and down. That affects the increment too. But, and it should be more increment than what I projected here. You can see what would be retained in the TIF, at least according to the premises of this spreadsheet, and what would be shared over a period of time.
Counsel, questions or comments? Yes, Alderman Perkins.
May I, just before, two differences here. I'm sorry to interrupt, but meant to say this. So in the other two agreements that we've had, there was always a chance that some big project would materialize, and everybody was sort of in favor, but then you're sort of trapped by the revenue sharing. You're not going to be able to have enough to put toward that project. There is a provision that we negotiated back and forth on that allows for the city to make the case that might be, this project with the support of the other taxing bodies is worth foregoing the surplus for that year. And if it's agreed by the other taxing bodies, then that can be done. So that's a different twist to the previous IGAs. Sorry.
Alderman Perkins.
So I'll start with saying, thanks, Bill, because the history here with DeKalb's use of TIF is spotty. The JRB exists because of that spotty history. So I'm sure they view any of our efforts in that way with a degree of skepticism. So compliments to you for helping appease that skepticism, and at the same time convincing them of the need for this TIF in that area. So great to hear they're on board with it. Thank you for your efforts and pushing this along, Bill. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
On the south side.
Other comments or questions? We're really looking forward to getting this moving forward and seeing over the years the impact it's going to make, like we saw in downtown. That 4th Street corridor is well deserved of some City of DeKalb love. So this is going to be a great catalyst for that.
So at the next meeting, if you so direct, I'll bring this back in a form that would lead to action, and also there will be three ordinances that what state statute requires that we have to create a TIF, and you'll have your first chance to look at those. And they can be held on first reading only and then brought back in a December 9th meeting for final approval.
And those of you in the audience and listening at home, feel free to just reach out to Alderman Perkins, Alderman Powell, or myself with any comments or questions you have on TIF. I think we're all happy to talk as much as possible on this, make sure everyone's educated on it.
Absolutely.
All right, so moving on then to Agenda Item J, resolutions. Number one, Resolution 2024-108, authorizing a TIF fund, Fund 262 Architectural Improvement Program, AIP grant for Duckies at 250 East Lincoln Highway in the amount of $6,283. I will be recusing myself from the conversation and the vote, because I own a commercial property in the TIF district, but I'll just stay here and facilitate the conversation. So can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Smith. City manager?
Thank you. You may recall that Duckies received some TIF assistance as part of a larger project that was before the council back in June and was eventually in August and September put into place, thanks to Andy Ryan and others who helped make that possible. And that was to take, there were four buildings downtown that had identified cross connections between their building sewer and our stormwater system. And much of the money that the council voted at that time went into two main extensions at different parts of the downtown, in the 100 block and the 200 block on the south side of the downtown area. And the, in it, all four of the building owners, current building owners, were not considered party to the creation of the, in fact, didn't even know about the cross connection. The council voted a block of money to help them with their building sewers. Duckies was one of those. Coincidentally, at the time, Duckies was looking at a roof replacement, tuck pointing, and not unlike what was done on the north side of the road in the 200 block just earlier in the spring. But that had to be set aside because they also had expenses, having, unexpected expenses, having to do with the plumbing that had to be done inside their basement. So, but the roof issues have continued, aren't getting any better. The owner came to me about a month ago and said, "Is there any TIF?" I said, "Well, right now, that fund is depleted for the year after January 1st, provided there's a new budget, we'll have the ability to do something like that." And she said, "Well, I can't wait that long. We're going to do the roof. There is going to be tuck pointing, it's going to have to be done, and some other things." And we've done this a couple of other times with not-for-profits. And so what's on the table here tonight, in response to the application from Ms. Hosey, is to help with 50 percent of the, or excuse me, it's only 10 percent of the roof, because it's, and 50 percent of the tuck pointing. So it comes to $6,283. She's obviously paying more than that for the projects, and there's background that you've had a chance to look at. I think it's a fair ask, and but for what happened with our investigation of the sewers, this probably could have been done in July or August, something like that.
Counsel, questions or comments? Hearing none? Roll call then.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Zazada.
Yes.
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Five I.
Resolution two zero two four dash one oh eight passes. Moving on to Agenda Item, uh, J two, Resolution two zero two four dash one oh nine, authorizing an Illinois Department of Transportation IDOT Transit Planning Grant for the purpose of conducting, conducting a planning and environmental linkages PEL study. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderwoman Sizata, City Manager.
Uh, thank you. Uh, probably more background here than, than you would wish, but, uh, it's, uh, just more or less a reminder that it's been a year and a half since, uh, we got the Metro Feasibility Study, and you may remember, there was, there was a nice reception for that after it was done, and we were talking, what's the next step? And the next step was then to, uh, try to get some grant money to help us with the, uh, basically more hands-on, uh, investigation of the miles between here and, uh, the Auburn Station, uh, looking at the, the topography, doing probably some soil borings, and looking to see if, or, if an additional rail could be built alongside the, the other two, and that would be an expectation of UP and Metro as well. And, uh, we, we, uh, thanks to Mike Nguyen Kirschen, our Transit Manager, we, we jumped on that and applied, and, and we had a, a good read with our application, and, uh, we thought we were in business, but, uh, here it is, uh, ten, well, eighteen months later. We just learned that, uh, that money is not only available finally, but it has also been appropriated for us. So, um, the, the total, uh, of the project would be about five hundred thousand, four hundred thousand dollar grant. Hundred thousand dollars would come from our transit budgets, and there is money there. Uh, this would be the last piece that we can successfully probably take out of our, our resources, uh, which are generally dedicated for other purposes, as you know. But, uh, we'd like to proceed with this and then see what happens. At this point, we miss the season, it's going to be in the spring and next year that we get, get to work on this, and it might be this time next year before we know what the results are. That's where we are.
Counsel, questions, comments? Well, we're moving closer year by year. We knew this was going to be a, a long haul to make this happen, um, but pretty exciting that we're able to move on to the next phase. Uh, with that then, roll call please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Resolution two zero two four dash one oh nine passes. Moving on to number three, Resolution two zero two four dash one one zero, authorizing twenty-two vets' technologies to install the Verketa security system at the Public Works facility in the amount not to exceed fifty-two thousand dollars. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Sizata, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is essentially the system, it helps people get in and out of that secure, uh, complex, uh, over on Market Street, and that includes, uh, Public Works, fire and police, uh, personnel who are operating vehicles and, and also needing, uh, our fueling system, which is there, and it happens every day, twenty-four seven.
Counsel, any questions? Well, that definitely was a low bid, which is nice to see. Uh, roll call please.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Resolution zero two four dash one one zero passes. Number four, Resolution two zero two four dash one one one, authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding and approval of the purchase of two Ford E four fifty type three Osage, is it Osage? Osage ambulances in twenty twenty-six, and an additional two Ford E four fifty type three ambulances in twenty twenty-eight from North Central Emergency Vehicles in an amount not to exceed one million, thirty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, using ground emergency medical transportation funding, GEMT, uh, Fund One Thirty. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderwoman Sizata, City Manager.
Okay, uh, a lot of background here, but, uh, it, this is, we, we don't usually do something like this, and, uh, we're, we're looking ahead, uh, some four years here to see, um, if, if there's savings, and I believe there's a, a very significant savings if we proceed with this resolution. Here's what's up for your consideration. The, uh, ambulances that we have are expensive rigs, and, and really, in the last couple of years, the annual increase has far exceeded the average inflation in this country and in the Midwest region. And, uh, we don't see any break in that. We've talked to companies that, that create these ambulances, and they're usually built from scratch, uh, and take a while, uh, may, may take upwards to the better part of a year to, to get to where else. We just received two replace, these are replacement ambulances, and we're like, with, with Station Four people, they asked, uh, buying a new engine, or ambulance for that and a new engine. No, we're, we're transferring. We have some reserve ambulance, and we have some reserve, we, engines, and we're, we're moving them around and replacing them as we can. But in this case, it's two replacements, so the, the twenty-four units are replacing units, uh, that are about nine, on average, about nineteen years in age. Uh, we initially were just going to ask for permission to enter a contract for the twenty-six units, which we would enter a contract for now, they'd be to us in two years, and that would hold the price at, at roughly twenty-four, uh, levels. Uh, then we asked, well, uh, and then when we get these, if we wanted to, to run the cycle, would we be able to get the next two, uh, in, in, you know, with the average increase? And they said, no, it's whatever. The time now is going up to three years rather than two years, and the price is going to add another forty thousand dollars per unit at least, if not more. Uh, and so, uh, Chief Thomas and I talked, and he had the idea, which I supported, of, let's see if, if the council will, uh, be willing to enter a contract, uh, framework that's been negotiated here, that would allow us basically to get four vehicles for today's prices, uh, two arriving in twenty-six, two arriving in twenty-eight. Now, because of our accrual form of, of budgeting, uh, we don't pay for the equipment and capital goods until they're actually received. So this whole time that they're building them, over two years at a crack, uh, we're not paying them anything. It's when they ship them and they arrive, and they pull them into our, usually our Station One, then we better have a check. Right, Susan? Yeah. So, uh, I think this is a good deal. Uh, what's unusual about this is a number of people who are sitting on the, on the dais tonight may not be here when that is done, but it's, it's, uh, by contract, it, we have entered contracts which are binding over a period of years, over the future, and we, we feel that this can be constructed in such a way with our legal counsel, uh, so that the city is not put at, at risk, and that we'll be entitled to the, to the equipment when it's ready, and that, uh, that there will be some penalties if they don't deliver on the timeframe that they've set and the dollars that they've promised.
Counsel, comments, questions? Yes, Alderwoman Larson.
I just want to thank Chief Thomas and the city for planning ahead, because whoever's sitting up here is not going to want to have to take forty thousand dollars more than if we can start putting some figures onto these, these, um, projects now. So thank you so much for, for looking down the road for us.
Any other comments, questions? Yes, Alderman Smith.
Bill, is, I, is this going to be the norm? I'm seeing it where I'm at, that this is pretty much the norm.
Buses, fire, and, and bigger, our, uh, dump trucks that we just, uh, are, are talking, what we're talking about in two weeks, uh, are running, uh, four dump trucks for nine hundred thousand dollars.
So really, because people aren't keeping inventory on the lots?
No, that's correct.
They're built, built to specs.
It's, uh, it's seller's market right now.
Thank you.
Any others? Hearing none, roll call please.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Resolution two zero two four dash one 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 passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to number five, Resolution zero two four dash one one two, authorizing a one-year purchase agreement with Alexander Chemical for the purchase of chlorine for the period January one, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, for the purpose of treating the city's drinking water. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Sizata, City Manager.
It's that time of year, we come back to these, these three additives to our, our water system. The first one is, uh, chlorine, uh, and, uh, that's used to disinfect inside the, the pipes, uh, and, um, it, that obviously helps maintain our, our water quality. Um, we went to bid, um, and, uh, Al, what we found here, and you may have a memory of this, uh, last four year, three, four years, and through COVID and since, that we have few people bidding on this, and in this case, we had one bid, uh, by Alexander Chemical, who were in it last year, and we, we're, we're currently paying them, um, at, uh, a dollar, about a dollar fifty per pound, um, uh, no, excuse me, a dollar, uh, yeah, dollar sixty, dollar sixty-nine, I'm sorry. So they proposed a reduction, actually. We, we, we would save about seven thousand dollars annually at our current pace of use of chlorine, and, um, there is a, a proviso in the, in the offer that, uh, if, if both parties agree to this mutual agreement, uh, that we could go to a one-year extension, and beyond that, another one. So two one-year extensions, um, tied to the CPI for the previous twelve-month period. Uh, so we don't know what that will be, uh, but this, they're hungry enough on the chlorine side to, I think, give us a fair price, and we recommend it.
Counsel, questions or comments? Must be a lot of M and A activity in that world for one person to submit a bid. All right, roll call please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Resolution two zero two four dash one one two passes. Moving on to Agenda Item six, J six, Resolution two zero two four dash one one three, authorizing a one-year purchase agreement with Alexander Chemical for the purchase of fluoride, uh, for the period January one, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, for the purpose of treating the city's drinking water. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Smith, City Manager.
Uh, and yes, we do participate in water fluoridation. And, uh, this is something that I don't think is controversial anymore in this country, but, um, certainly it's something that, uh, the Center for Disease Control and the IEP, uh, find, uh, is very important. And we went out for bid, uh, Alexander Company was, uh, one, one of the bidders, uh, and a low bidder. Uh, there was a second bidder, Univar Solutions, uh, they did not, however, bid on any extensions. Uh, so, um, the low bid was from Alexander Company. Uh, that amount, uh, will result in a very slight increase, about a hundred and eighty-five dollars annually is what we estimate, and so we recommend, uh, this particular bid.
Counsel, questions or comments? Alderman Smith?
Thank you. Though really, what we're getting is our three-year contracts that we've been after out of this, which kind of gives us the ability to project.
Yeah, and they agreed, I mean, uh, so I, who knows, uh, two years from now, what the cost of living may be. I think it'll be lower, maybe even next year, but, uh, then it's, it's going to go up at some point, look at the bond market, so something's going to happen.
But projectable for us.
It looks pretty good.
Yeah, thank you.
Any others? Hearing none, roll call please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Resolution two zero two four dash one one three passes. Number seven, Resolution two zero two four dash one one four, authorizing a one-year purchase agreement with the Consolidated Grain and Barge for the purchase of water-conditioning bulk softener salt for the period January one, twenty twenty-five through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, for the purpose of treating the city's drinking water. Can I have a motion to bring this one to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Smith, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we do use some, uh, specific kinds of rock salt to, uh, slightly soften our potable water supply. Uh, we also went to bid on that contract, uh, we got a different bidder, uh, only one bidder, uh, for this particular contract, Consolidated Grain and Barge. Uh, they, they bid a hundred forty-six dollars a ton, a little bit higher than where we were, uh, for the tonnage that we use, uh, that would result in about a, almost twenty-two hundred dollars more annually out of our water fund. But, um, once again, there is an option if, if we choose to participate in it for, uh, two one-year extensions. Uh, we don't, we don't feel that we'll find, if we went out for bid again throughout the one bid, that we'll find a better price on this.
Counsel, questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Resolution two zero two four dash one one four passes, so we will continue having great city drinking water, top ten in the nation. Awesome. All right, moving on to Agenda Item K, Ordinance's second reading, we have none. Agenda Item L, Ordinance's first reading, number one, Ordinance two zero two four dash zero five one, authorizing the twenty twenty-four levy and twenty twenty-five collection of taxes in and for the corporate and municipal purposes in special service areas of the city of DeKalb for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Sizata, seconded by Alderman Smith, City Manager.
Uh, thank you. Uh, the, uh, I, I want to thank Mr. Charbaugh for laying out my argument. Uh, this is, uh, um, an interesting time of year always, uh, and we have been making an effort, uh, we, the city have been making an effort to try to reduce not just the rate, but the actual out-of-pocket dollars, and, uh, in the public hearing portion of your agenda tonight, you see some, some better charts than I had under the ordinance pieces, but you can see how we've been doing that, what the impact on the, um, the average city home are now. By the way, these, these are EAV numbers, multiply that by three, you get the relative market value. Started at a three hundred thousand dollar home, and, and a hundred thousand dollar EAV, so you can see where it's, where it's gone in these last six years. But in the last six years, the city council has, uh, successfully reduced the out-of-pocket, not just this year, obviously, but over six years, by two hundred thirty-six dollars and forty-five cents. Um, the library portion of the aggregate levy, which is a combined, uh, city and library levies, has gone up a hundred and four dollars and fifty-five cents over the last six years. And, uh, as, as it was mentioned earlier, um, the increase this year is almost thirty-five percent, uh, in the levy that's requested by, by the, uh, the library. So, uh, the, the ordinance, uh, there, there is one point where, where, uh, I, I will disagree with some who have said that, uh, we, we have that opportunity, and whatever may have happened before, I, I can tell you, and, and John Donahue's here tonight, uh, thank you for being here, John, will, I believe, support me on this. So, uh, they, the truth in taxation law and PTAL as, as amended, uh, and, uh, in terms of the case law, since whenever, two thousand eight, or certainly in the last ten years, uh, has made it very clear that, well, we are a pass-through for the library's levy. Now, it doesn't mean that the council doesn't have the ability to do something to, 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 by meeting with, with principals at the library and library board, uh, to try to roll back, uh, a, a proposed levy that is, uh, larger by four hundred percent than, than last year, and, and, uh, more than twice the historic highest, uh, levy that the library Board has ever voted. It's been around three hundred fifty thousand a year, and we understand that that's the largest portion of their general revenue. But, uh, even at seven hundred thousand, which by a way, by the way, is approximately what the breakeven would be, uh, in terms of their, this year's EAV.
Meaning if they held the taxpayer harmless, yep.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, and, and I can say that, uh, we have a meeting tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, the mayor and I and Alderman Perkins, with Emily Faulkner, the CEO, and, uh, or Executive Director of the Library, and, and two members of the board, have to observe the Open Meetings Act, but, uh, persons who have had something to do with the library's position are going to be there, and we hope to find, uh, common ground, uh, at, at another point than where we are now. Uh, the, if, if we don't, the, the ordinance that would come without any revision is, um, in your background tonight, and you can see, we've, we've also published a black box notice, in your background tonight, and you can see, we've, we've also published a black box notice, and we did get quite a lot of response from that. Usually, we don't, but we also put a, in addition to what's by law in the black box and published in the local newspaper, we have, it's almost a half a page explaining what all this means, because the numbers are scary when you look at it in the, in the aggregate. So I, I would recommend, getting back to the city portion, which is principally what's on the agenda tonight, recommend what the Finance Advisory Committee has, has recommended to you, and also what we've been talking about and talking around since the August meeting of the council and the FAC. So I, I think that's appropriate. It's a little over six hundred thousand dollars in actual new dollars for the city. I'll stop.
Alderman Perkins?
I have thoughts. On the levy, I don't like much of, any of it. I didn't like the FAC recommendation. We've got a looming pension problem that is just exploding. We're upside down on our mortgage. We're paying a smaller portion every single year. So I don't like that with the city piece. I could come to accept that with the city piece. The library piece, I, I, it befuddles me. If you look, go back and look at some of the history here. And Mr. Charvat, thank you for your numbers. It gave me some cause to think again. In two thousand oh eight, their library rate was point two five. By two thousand nineteen, it had gone to point three eight six. It had gone up fifty percent. So since then, they're easing it down a little bit, and it comes down to point oh four this, this time, where it comes down, the rate comes down, but the amount goes up a million dollars with no justification of where the million dollars is going. I've talked with, with, with Emily. We had, we'd come to an agreement on a different number, and then this one comes out. So I'm, I'm frustrated. I know it's advertised that, that we're a pass-through, but I think at the end of the day, I have a vote, and if I have a vote, that means I can vote yes, or I can vote no. I'm very comfortable voting no and finding out what happens if we vote no, because this is just, it's so befuddling to me, to be handed a million-dollar bill with no justification as to why. So those are my thoughts. Right now, I'm looking forward to the meeting to discuss tomorrow.
Well, I appreciate your time as our liaison to the library board, and I know you've been to board meetings and you've had conversations with Emily. I couldn't agree more on this. We seem to have this issue every single solitary year, and the increase, which Mr. Charvat's numbers were wrong, it's not thirty-four percent, it's thirty-four point seven nine, so it's almost thirty-five percent. I, I don't know how that can be justified, which since two thousand twenty-one, that's almost a two million dollar increase in their annual budget. So we did set up a meeting tomorrow, as City Manager Nicholas said. Alderman Perkins will be there, I'm sure, with the same approach, which I really look forward to.
Even the frustrating piece here is, we're handed a million-dollar bill, and there's no one here. In the library, there's no one here to talk about the money that we're just supposed to pass through and agree to.
Well, no background email or, yes.
There is one other thing that we do assume, we have been assuming since two thousand thirteen, and we're paying four hundred seven thousand plus this year, as we have every, every year since then, to help member, other councils thought it was important to help the library with the new addition. So while there, there were, maybe the library's paid off there, theirs, I don't know, but we're paying that out of our general fund.
To like twenty thirty-three, right?
Yeah.
Somewhere around there, yep. And that comes right out of our general fund.
Yes, it does.
Yes, right.
One, one more point, too.
Please.
Sorry, because I.
Absolutely.
Did some digging on this to understand a little more about the library rate and where it falls. And incidentally, in DeKalb County, DeKalb's library rate is the highest in the county. And not just by a little bit, by quite a bit. So it's the highest, there's just a huge amount of things that perplex me. I'm really looking forward to discussing. But I wanted to put them all out there for digestion, that A, it's gone up considerably, B, it's coming down, C, what the, the, the real money that they're looking for is going up hugely, and we've got no detail to talk about.
Right.
You know?
But yet, it impacts our overall levy and the impression people have of how the city of DeKalb is doing. Alderman Larson?
Just to basically agree with Alderman Perkins is, the library, I don't even have anything to talk about, because they've given us no information outside of this crazy number. But the second thing, and I still, I know we're talking about the state and the pensions and that, you know, they'll do something, but at the end of the day, we still own that money. We still have to come up with it. They're not going to, they're not going to wipe it away like debt relief or something. DeKalb is, that's our commitment to that money that has to go there. So I also don't want to be kicking the can down to the next council, and the next council, and that we now have a problem. So I don't know exactly what the answer is to that, but that's my concern with this, is that, while I would love to have a great tax increase, more than, more than this, at the end of the day, it's like saying, well, I got a hundred dollars back, but I'm not going to put it to my credit card debt. I'm just going to go out and, and spend it. We still have this debt that we have to pay, and we're paying interest on it.
The good thing is, like, the decision to give the hundred dollars back, this isn't permanent. Every year, this council and future councils will get to decide on what the levy needs to be in order to meet the obligations that we have. Absolutely. So I'm happy to reach out, and, and I'm sure Alderman Perkins would, too, to update council members on the conversation tomorrow. I hope it's, oh, sorry, Alderman Walker.
Good person, no, good moron handsome.
Age before beauty.
One question, and I think, I think Alderman Perkins, I touched on it briefly. Where, and you guys can answer this tomorrow, where is the dollars needed? Is it for the expansion of the library, and that they not project operating funds from the date this library was built?
I believe the focus tomorrow will be about their, what they call their capital needs. That's, we've had just a briefest of conversations, but as Alderman Perkins said, that's something you need a plan for, because capital expenditures are substantial, whoever's doing them, and particularly if you're on a building, which is the main asset here. And what, what specifically is needed? Can you, how do you parse this out over a period of years? Usually, if you have large expenditures on a capital side, there's an evolution of, of how you spend for these, and you don't do it all. We don't buy all of our trucks every year, and, you know, and, and so I, I think that's what we have to get down to. And I believe what's, what's the library's about is, and I saw a note from Emily this morning, that they are looking to hire architects, architectural engineering help to identify a list, but you usually don't levy for something until you know what the price is.
Until you know, right.
So, so there, there, again, there's, there's a pretty broad middle ground here. They can reduce it, they can cut it in half, what they're asking for, and still be twice as much as what they were last year in terms of.
And in all fairness, Mr. Nicholas, if you, if you came and wanted that, we would be wanting detail on.
What are you going to spend this on?
Alderman Walker?
Well, my grandmother used to always tell me, you learn more by listening, and you guys hit on the points. I was going to ask, thank you. But yeah, I just don't understand the respect, you know, for it, because to ask for, you know, that kind of money and not to be present, it's just kind of like a slap in the face. And another thing I don't understand with all taxing bodies is, I hear all of them say, we want families, great families to move to DeKalb. I want them to do this. We want this. But it's like, we have to beg them, you know, to keep their levies in, in check. So people do want to move here. So, hey, good luck tomorrow, please.
I love the word befuddling. And for the record, to be clear, too, Alderman Perkins really drove the, so the city initiated the reach out to have a meeting to find out what's going on in order to get further clarity. So. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Hearing none, none, then we'll do roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisata?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Is it yes?
Yes.
Smith?
Oh, yes.
Yes. I'm the same, sorry.
No.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Five I?
Ordinance two zero two four dash zero five one passes on first reading. We'll leave that for another time. Pass on second reading. Moving on to number two, ordinance two zero two four dash zero five two, abating taxes levied for corporate purposes of the city of DeKalb, Illinois for the tax year twenty twenty-four. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Smith, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a companion ordinance that goes with the levy ordinance, because we abate our, our general obligation debt service to reduce the impact of, of the tax bill on the local residents and businesses. And we've been doing that for a long time. And in order to do that, we have to identify what the debt service is. If you look on page fourteen, you see a little chart there that comes to two million seven hundred thirty-seven thousand, two hundred twenty-one dollars, spread across three different bonds, and there's no new bond. We did the twenty-three bond, which is for the construction of the fire station number four. We've got, where it says library there, those are refunding. One, one of them is now going away, and the, the last refunding was in twenty-two. So we recommend, again, approval on first reading.
Questions or comments, counsel? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Sisata?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Ordinance two zero two four dash zero five two passes on first reading. Can we waive second? Is there a reason to keep it going? Keep it going?
Yeah, we, we do these in.
You got it.
Tandem.
All right, moving on to number three, ordinance two zero two four dash zero five three, authorizing Northern Illinois University NIU annual contribution for integrated transit services in the amount of two million four hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred fifty-five dollars. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Sisata, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So back in the fall of two thousand eighteen, the council approved a resolution that authorized us to enter into an IGA with NIU that helped us create the integrated transit services we know today. That, that agreement had a five-year term. It expires at the end of this calendar year. Mike Noon-Kirchen has talked with his counterparts at NIU. The current level is thirty-five percent of the cost of our fixed route transit expenses, which is reimbursed by NIU. It carries that forward. We don't see any reason to adjust that, and we recommend this to you, to extend this for another term of five years.
Counsel, questions, comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisata?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Ordinance two zero two four dash zero five three passes on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Sisata, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any comments or questions, counsel? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisata?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Ordinance, or second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two four dash zero five three. Any way to do the next three in omnibus fashion, or? No? All right, fine. If you're hesitating, we'll just move on. Number four, ordinance two zero two four dash zero five four, authorizing an annexation and development agreement with PSA Huber IL Solar LLC for property located at the southwest corner of Illinois Route Thirty-eight and John Huber Parkway. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Sisata, seconded by Alderman Larson, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Grant Thomas, who represents Pure Sky Energy, which is, for the case of these three ordinances doing businesses, the PSE Huber Illinois Solar LLC, is here tonight and is available to answer any questions you may have. So this is a proposition to build a, a solar farm, a five-megawatt farm with ground-mounted solar panels that would be at the southwest corner of Route Thirty-eight and John Huber Parkway on West Lincoln Highway. And the, there's a little bit of background here. It's pretty straightforward. Because it is an entry to the city, there was some discussion about this at the staff level and also at the plant commission about what could be done, even though it's, it's closer to egg than a warehouse, but it still looks different. It's not done, look like corn, doesn't look like beans. And the, the minimum setbacks that we have in our UDO, some thought might not be enough. What we had suggested in return was to set up some, some more extensive landscaping and possibly a berm to, as you make the curve there, it's kind of curvilinear shape, to help shield the, the look of the panels for people eastbound on Lincoln Highway. And that was agreeable to the developer and also to the plant commission, which had looked at this conceptually back in March and had recommended that it go forward. And then at the meeting, there, there was some interest also in the fact, from, from the county highway department, that someday, I don't, we don't know when it might be, but there might be an extension of the Huber Parkway southward, and there was an adjustment, we're happy to say, by the developer to allow for that right of way to go through the property. So I think the package now is, is more, more polished than it was maybe back in March, and we're grateful to Mr. Thomas and his company for wanting to work with us. And Mr. Thomas said that, that his company, and forgive me if I'm not stating this correctly, would be willing to enter a bond to ensure that the screening provisions would be successfully installed.
Counsel?
How, how large is this one compared to the ones we have? This looks pretty large.
It's, it's bigger than the one that's obviously going to be built by the airport. That's, it's, it's roughly, it's, it's a little bit larger than the one down on South First and Gerler.
South First Street, okay.
Yes. But compared to, if you go further afield in this part of Illinois, you can see, I mean, there, a whole section or larger is devoted to.
I like the screening.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Alderman Sisata?
I'm not sure if I missed it, but are we also looking at natural, natural plantings under the solar panels?
Yeah, come on up.
With Pure Sky Energy? There we go. I think it's working. Yeah, we're, we're planting native pollinator plants for under and around the array. And we're also happy to provide, like, a visual impact analysis. I think we would like to avoid a bond and a berm. Those are expensive, and a berm is actually hard to establish a screen on top, just because of the earth moving. So if, if it's helpful, we'd be happy to provide a visual impact analysis, kind of showing renderings of what the current screening plans would look like.
I see screenings, it's going to be natural screenings, right? It's going to be shrubs or trees or something like that, then?
Yep, yeah.
Instead of a berm, you're saying?
Yep.
Yeah, gotcha.
And something that grows pretty, pretty quickly, I think, right?
Yeah, I think we have, like, a three-year kind of guarantee on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other comments?
Will you do a little kickoff event, so we can come and teach us more about it, please?
Absolutely, yeah. We'll do a ribbon cutting.
Thanks.
Any others? Well, definitely appreciate attention to the visual aspects of this, and I know city staff drove that. I've actually heard some council members as well concerned about that. This is an entry point in our city, pretty major one overall, so we really want to make sure we maintain the integrity, or at least don't take steps back. So I really appreciate you being open to that.
Sure, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisata?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Ordinance two zero two four dash zero five four has passed. I would take a motion to waive.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Sisata. Questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisata?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I?
Ordinance two zero two four dash zero five four has been, second reading has been waived. Moving on to number five, ordinance two zero two four dash zero five five, approving the annexation of certain property located at the southwest corner of Illinois Thirty-eight and John Huber Parkway, PSA Huber IL Solar LLC. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
Hey, the action the council just took to find the framework and the respective rights and responsibilities of the city and also the developer for this, and having done that, the actual act of annexation should follow and you can't unreasonably, now that you've done all that, pull it back unless you want to put something on the floor to that effect.
We can do whatever we want, Bill, but okay.
Is that right, John?
Any other comments? I guess we can.
My thoughts exactly.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Ordinance 2024-055 passes. I would take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second.
So I've got a motion by Alderman Smith, a seconded by Alderwoman Sisada to waive second reading for ordinance 2024-055. Comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2024-055. Number six, ordinance 2024-056, approving the zoning petition of PSA Huber IL Solar LLC to rezone certain property located at the southwest corner of Illinois Route 38 and John Huber Parkway to, bless you, to the PDI Plan Development Industrial District and approving a concept plan for the development of a five-megawatt grounded, ground-mounted solar energy system, solar farm on approximately 42 acres. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Larson, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. By state statute, annex parcel comes into the city upon the act of annexation in the most restrictive zoning, which would be the single-family residential district and obviously you can't have a solar farm in a single-family residential district. The appropriate, according to our Unified Development Ordinance, the appropriate zoning is PDI Plan Development Industrial District for such solar farms. That's how we've zoned others in the past and so the proposition before you now is to rezone the property as it's now annexed to PDI Plan Development Industrial.
Council, questions, comments? Alderman Smith.
Two questions, Bill. That farm that's out there, does that come in or is that part of this or is that separated?
It's a, as I understand, it's gonna stay. Is that correct? Yeah.
Okay. And I guess I was gonna ask this earlier, when are you gonna start the project? I think we all kind of skipped on that one.
Hoping to start construction by fall of next year.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Any others? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Ordinance 2024-056 passes. I would take a motion to waive second reading for ordinance 2024-056.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any questions or comments, Council? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Sisada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2024-056. Welcome to the family. Really excited to have you guys here. Don't hesitate to reach out to city staff or any one of us if you need anything. We're here to help you make your project successful, sir. All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on to agenda item M, Reports and Communications, Councilmember reports. Alderman Smith, you want to kick us off?
No report.
Alderman Walker?
Yeah, I'm proud to say in the seventh ward, Ryan's Homes has put up a lot of houses and I've been talking to a lot of people and seeing where they're from. You know, we have people coming from Naperville, North Aurora and Maple Park and, you know, they're just talking about our city and I think we're headed in the right direction. So hopefully the rest of the taxing bodies could see that and they can keep their levies in check going forward.
Excellent. Alderman Perkins?
No report.
Alderwoman Larson?
No report.
Alderwoman Sisada?
I was fortunate to be able to participate in the Veterans Day program at CRMS, Clinton Rosette Middle School. They do a great job of putting on a big program for the students and then an assembly at the end. And as a reminder, I am having my ward meeting December 3, 5:00 p.m. I think it's 5:00 p.m. Ruth might correct me. December 3, 5:00 p.m. at Jefferson Elementary School. It'll be in the cafeteria.
Myself, oops, I was able to attend, oh my gosh, apologies, where is it? There it is. So FISIGS had their annual parent family day celebration and auction. This is one of the houses on Greek Row and they raised thousands of dollars, have raised thousands of dollars and donated back to our DeKalb Fire Department and our DeKalb Police Department. I think our police department got $400 this year, something like that.
That's correct.
What's that?
That's correct.
Awesome. Bill was there as well and it's just a really great event to be able to talk, one, to our students and share with them what's going on in the community, but also I bet there was 75 parents there that we were able to talk with them as well and talk about all the forward progress we've been making in that neighborhood and in the city of DeKalb as a whole. So it's just a great platform for communication every single solitary year. I also attended an event here at the public library, which is another function that they do serve for having guest speakers come into the community and it was Diane Nyland. She spoke on homelessness and especially focused more around family homelessness and what we're seeing, one, in the city of DeKalb, but also national trends and what we can do about something like that. So it's been a trend that I've been doing, just trying to figure out with Hope Haven, what's going on with our homeless shelter and getting more educated on that. And this was a great speaker. I think Hope Haven helped sponsor it as well as the Unitarian Church here on Fourth Street and it was really informative. So again, her name is Diane Nyland and she's written a couple of really interesting books. Also went to Kishawaki College's gala. That's a fundraiser for Kishawaki College and man, listening to some of the students and their success stories coming out of Kish College and what they've been able to accomplish